Uh, welcome to the meeting, the August meeting of the Orange zoning board of appeals. My name's David Crowe. I'll be chairing the meeting in the absence of Noah Isahan, our normal chair, chairperson. To my right, I have Wayne Garrett. I'm sorry, Wayne Garrett, I don't know where I got that.
He's the second baseman of the Mets.
We have Pat Panza. And we're through the looking glass tonight, cause Jack Demers is on the wrong side of the table. So we have Greg Natalino and Owen, and myself again, and we have Owen, I'm sorry.
Weaver.
Weaver. Uh, he is our, um, we got Eric Ozil, I'm sorry, and we got Owen Weaver, who is our attorney for this evening, sitting in for Vinnie Marino. We have Bonnie Sade, our, our intrepid recording artist here, and Jenny Bowser is our new addition. So I think I got everybody. We have one item on the agenda tonight. The first thing I'll do is, gentlemen, if you got a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting, uh, if you have, I'd entertain a motion, uh, I'd ask for any corrections if you have them.
Don't move.
I'd entertain. Okay, you're moving to accept the minutes as presented? No corrections, I suppose. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. We got that done. Now, under old business tonight, we have the application, or we have the appeal of Clement matter. Clement? Clement's matter that we had our public hearing on the twenty-eighth of July.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Just cause Jack's sitting over there, I'm all for Clement. Uh, so we'll, now's the time we're gonna do our deliberations. First thing I'd like to do, gentlemen, is it seems like we had a concession by Mr. Clement's lawyer uh, on the second two, on the items number two and three on the, um, the cease and desist order. And, let me see if I can find that. That had to do with, uh, somebody help me out here. That had to do with the, um,
Items two and three.
Two and three were the
Tow trucks.
Storage and tow trucks.
Junk cars.
Storage of wrecked and junked cars, and the third item, uh, bodywork and painting.
Vinnie, wherever you are tonight, I want you to know Owen, I'm gonna just pay you tonight. So the sec, uh, number two says, receipt, storage and repair of wrecked or junk vehicles violates the Orange zoning regulations. And three says, the performance of any body or fender work, including any painting operations violates the Orange zoning regulations. Since we had a concession on that, I'd like to say the first thing we should do is just sustain the, that part of the appeal.
That's correct.
Or is it sustain? Yeah, sustain. So I'd entertain a motion to sustain items two and three on the, uh, cease and desist.
I make a motion.
Motion. Second by Greg. Uh, you want you to call the roll, Jenny, and we'll vote on that part. Uh, sure, you wanna have discussion on that?
I would, I would like to suggest we put a time limit on item number two.
It's a good idea. I think you did that during the testimony. About thirty to sixty days?
He said thirty to sixty days, but I was wondering if we could stipulate forty-five days.
I can also confirm, I drove by the property today, all wrecked vehicles have already been removed from the property.
Alright, so let's, let's play it safe. Let's play it safe and put a forty-five, I think a forty-five.
I think we should handle it as a condition.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think that's the way it should be proposed.
Okay, so.
So I would like to amend the motion.
Amend the motion.
To that item number two include a stipulation that it's cured in forty-five days.
Any discussion on that, gentlemen?
It's, the, the writ.
What he's trying to get at is to make sure they maintain it. In other words, what happens is, yes, they, they may take care of it, but going forward, they may come back to the same situation, which testimony has already proved for the last ten, fifteen, twenty years, that that was the case. So what, what we will try to do is make them be a good neighbor. That's why I said, this should be, you should back that out and make a condition on two and three, and then the first one, item one, that would be separate, a separate condition.
Yeah, we're gonna deal with that at a different, a different time. So if I hear, that was your motion originally, Pat, wasn't it?
What's that?
The, the motion to accept.
Yeah, but I wanted to include three.
Right, now you wanna amend your motion.
Well, you meant his motion. Wayne made a motion, I turned around and said.
For someone else to say.
Okay, so we've, we've got an amended motion. So should we, we gotta table the first motion? I'm, I'm short on my Roberts rules here. We gotta table the first motion.
That's correct.
We, we never voted or anything, so we wanna start a separate motion, reword how we want it.
Alright, but we had, we had a motion and a second, so we've gotta do something with that. I'm not sure on my Roberts rules. I think we have to vote to table the first motion, then amend it, and then.
With the following language.
Correct. Okay, so I'd entertain a vote to table the first motion. Johnny, you wanna call the roll on that and table the first motion?
Mr. Panza?
Yes.
Mr. Greg?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. N, Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, man.
Mr. Natalino?
Yes.
Thank you. So that motion is tabled. Now let's amend the motion as.
As far.
Take, take a stab at the language on the motion.
I think the motion, and it's of a discussion too, the motion should read as this, that the current owner of the property, of this particular petition, should, uh, there should be a motion that they should maintain the condition set forth, so that if they do not, uh, they do not maintain the condition, then the cease and desist will be reinstated.
Hang on a second. First off, Owen, do we have
So, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have authority to put conditions on, cause our, our job is to sustain or to overrule?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the first task of the board is to rule on, on the, on the appeal of, of the zoning officer's cease and desist. So this board has to either sustain or overrule the, the cease and desist order. I think a reasonable timetable to, uh, if the board were to find in favor of the zoning officer to, to remedy or abate the violation is appropriate, but I wouldn't be getting into conditions, it's, it's not a variance application.
Okay, so what we'll say then is that we've sustained two and three.
For the reasons set forth.
For the reasons set, that we have a, we've sustained two and three because we have a concession by the appellant in this case, that they're in violation of the cease, they're in violation of the injunction. And therefore, can we, we punt to Jack to check up within forty-five days?
Sure, I mean, if, if we sustain the order, if they, if this is two years from now, I'm gonna be starting another enforcement. I mean, this is, this is a permanent decision here.
Just a second.
So I think, if, if we wanna put a timeframe on it, we can, we can say, uh, items two and three must be executed within thirty days of our decision. But i- it's inherent that this is a permanent, we don't have to, there's no end date here.
Okay. Is, is that what you were driving at, Wayne?
I'm suggesting the forty-five days for a couple of reasons. One, so that the neighbors have some sense of timing, how this is going to happen. And two, for the appellant, so that he knows, or they know, they have time and to not begin the fines until after the forty-five days. So there's, that's why I think it's important to stipu, stipulate the number of days.
Any other discussion on that?
Even if it's been cured already, the point is that forty-five days from now, Jack can inspect and, uh, either send another notice or begin the fines.
Yeah, Pat.
Well, that's great, you know, as far as you're talking about forty-five days, but you had a judgment from, uh, uh, from a court, from Judge Fuller, saying that they were in violation. But yet they still moved forward and continued the operation. So my point is, that's why I talked about a condition, then there, if they turn around and didn't comply with, I understand, hang on, second and third of, of the decision from Judge Fuller, that there have to be some other ramifications, otherwise you're going in one big circle here. You, you, yeah, you do. You comply, they comply for a bit, and then they go right back to.
Giving them time to comply.
But, but, Pat, what I, what I'm understanding is we only have authority to either sustain or overrule. Now, as far as enforcement goes, Jack can enforce on any complaint he hears going forward, so if somebody from the neighborhood gives him a call, then he's off and running. Uh, he's driven by the court order and there's no, there's no argument.
Then it's fine.
Okay.
Right.
As far as actually enforcing the court order, I'm not sure we have authority to do such a thing.
Well, I, look, if.
We can enforce the zoning regs, and then they're in violation of the zoning regs, according to the injunction.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman, if, if the applicant were to, if this board were to sustain the cease and desist order, and then the applicant is to continue to violate it, you know, the town would have a right of action to enforce this board's order, so.
And then he's immediately subject to.
Correct. E- even if it were to restart, let's, let's say a year, you know, we, we have a violation existing on the property again. I don't issue a violation, they appeal, and we come back here. We, we don't just keep going in a circle like that. I would piggyback off of this and say, we have already ruled on this, you know, fines and other legal action would accrue.
So then probably it's best to leave it as broad as possible.
I, I would think so, but of course, up for discussion.
Well, perhaps the attorney can help us out with this, because the order says to immediately cease and desist. Does that mean tomorrow?
Yes.
So if they don't, um, remedy the, this order in a week, then Jack is going to start to
He's gonna start.
Cumulate fines.
Correct.
See, I'm trying to give both the appellant here and the neighbors a sense of fairness to both.
I understand.
But you don't have to, by the way.
Any more discussion on that? Greg, Owen?
I, I don't think it would be an issue to, you know, kinda go off of what Wayne is saying. I'm just saying, I don't know if it's, it's not required for me, you know, if after this forty-five days goes over, again, I'm not issuing another order, they appeal, we find ourselves back here. I just wanna make it, you know, known that it is a permanent decision that we're making here. Right. So it's, we, we can give them fair time, I'm, I'm more than fine with that, give, you know, the appellant the time to make these corrections. But even if they don't, it's, you know, we, we take further action anyways.
As far as I know, they've already taken major action. The place is cleared of all the cars has been, they put a fence. They've actually moved, um, a few of the, the large wreckers out of there to a new facility. So, the way I see it, the cease and desist order is already in play, so to speak. And, like, that's, it's kinda a moot point a little bit, because they already did their job, and and if they do bring and drag a car back there tomorrow, then you can find them tomorrow technically, right? So it's already, you know, I understand, you know, what you're saying, we give them forty-five days, but they've already done it, and everything is, I think, already in motion, and I, and this is a much bigger cleanup than they've ever done there. Um, you know, I think this is pretty much a permanent cleanup that they, that they've taken, you know, have performed and.
But if the sense of the board is that we don't need to stipulate a timetable, I always like structure, by the way. It's, uh, part of my DNA, but, um, um, then I'll withdraw the amendment.
Okay, I, I appreciate the need for structure, but I think we can count on the combination of Jack and the neighbors to, to kind of, to be the enforcement to a lot of this. And I think that's probably, I mean, first off, they've had the cease and desist order now for three months. They kinda knew it was coming. Uh, their lawyer's been talking to them for a while, so uh, I, I guess, in my mind, I don't really see a need to give them any extra time on that. Anybody else have any thoughts? So let, so let's, let's go back to the original motion, where we're gonna sustain items two and three of the appeal.
Um, of the cease and desist.
Of the cease and desist, okay. Items two and three of the cease and desist. And Jenny, if you'll call the roll on that one, we'll vote.
Sure.
Oh, hang on, hang on. We need a fir, we need a, that, we need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
That's gonna make a motion.
Second.
Second by Greg, okay. Call the roll.
Mr. Panza?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Natalino?
Okay. Alright, now we're down to number one. That's where the rubber meets the road. And just for everybody's edification, number one says, any motor vehicle repair or similar activity beyond the limited repair work authorized by the nineteen forty-six variance violates the Orange Zory, oh, and, wow, Orange zoning regulations, even it is repair work, which a licensed repair may perform under section fourteen dash fifty-one of the general statutes. I assume that means Connecticut general statutes. So that's what's up for discussion. Anyone wanna, you know, go ahead.
If it pleases the Chair, I did a little research from the Office of Legislature, and if you don't mind, I'd like to distribute, a definite, the definition of a limited repair. So if you, I think if we read that, you'll see that, um, it, it clearly defines what, what a limited repairer is and isn't.
Right. Which we also have backup from our town council.
It's a little, right, but it's, um, slightly more inclusive than I think that we were discussing at the initial meeting. I mean, Eric brought up at the last meeting about wheel alignment and balancing, that's included here.
That's the front end, go ahead, I'm sorry, Eric, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So a wheel balancing machine's a different machine?
Oh, I know that.
Um, they, I guess it was a, they called it with a front-end machine?
Front-end machine.
On, on, uh.
That would be for alignment.
Cor, correct. So, but they also have like free lifts in there, you know, as well. But yeah, it's not a wheel balancing machine.
No, under the definition of limited repair, you're allowed to balance wheels.
One of my issues here is that, uh, we didn't hear a lot of evidence about what's going on inside the, uh, inside the building. We heard, a lot of people say they didn't mind what he was doing in the building, and had availed themselves of it. And, um, but we didn't hear any evidence about what sort of procedures and things they're, they're performing. I heard something about oil changes, which was specifically alluded to. Yeah, Pat?
Well, uh, there was evidence submitted to the board from a neighbor who was in favor of this organization continuing to do business in the manner that they're doing it. And in here, uh, this person, whether it be he or she, explicitly said that, uh, they had damage to their vehicle, they had the insurance company take a look at it. Um, Mike's, uh, did the repair, and they painted the vehicle. So stated, and it's part of your, your record. So behind closed doors, there are those things going on.
Well, we did deal with that paragraph number, in item three, so the painting is no longer gonna happen.
No, I understand that, but that's part, this item here is behind closed doors.
Okay, I'm not sure where you're going with that.
Huh?
What are you saying?
What I'm saying is that they're not so interested in what's happening behind closed doors. Some of the stuff that's, um, indicated in two and three is happening behind closed doors. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, well, that can be addressed.
Yeah, we already.
We already voted.
Okay, left mine.
But, you know, as far as the, beyond that part, uh, I didn't hear a lot of evidence about what was going on in there besides, I think they talked about oil changes, they've got four lifts I heard a lot about. Um, but I don't recall too much else about it. Again, I don't recall anybody having raised that as, as much of an issue. Am I wrong about that?
The people, the, they were not, what went on inside, they were okay with, it was really dragging a wrecked car at two o'clock in the morning and leaving car parts on the side of the road.
And the, and fluids.
And fluids, you know, that was their concern. Their concern was not the repair shop itself, I mean, in the repair.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the, the neighbors were okay with the repairs inside the building. Um, what they were not okay with is leaving a dismantled, a car that had been dismantled by, you know, a collision, and leaving, you know, antifreeze, and leaving glass and plastic on the side of the road, all that stuff has stopped, and also, you know, any bodywork, which is, um, that has stopped. But the, um, everyone seems to be fine with changing brakes and just doing the repairs that they perform inside the building. That was never, uh, an issue. It was really the bodywork and just leaving, um, crash cars in the parking lot there, and you know, backing them in and dropping them off at two o'clock in the morning. Um, I think that was everyone's concern. Um, which has been taken care of, so I think, you know, items two and three fall under those items, you know, the bodywork and cars aren't disrepair.
Uh, I agree, I think, um, I, if I recall, I think, uh, one of the comments made by their attorney was that, uh, the cease and desist order didn't, there wasn't a definition in number one. So therefore, uh, that was the only thing, and I think our, uh, the only thing we more or less had to do was develop a definition. So, other than that, I think that their attorney seemed to me to be comfortable with, with, obviously they're comfortable with two and three, so let's put that aside, but, but they, he wanted a definition of number one. What a limited repairer does.
Greg, if you're shaking your head.
No, I mean, you have the right here with it, limited. I think it's vague, if you look at the Connecticut statutes, limited, what was the other one? Limited is one, and the other one is a general.
General area.
It's vague, it's vague.
Well, we're not, and I think our, our attorney will confirm this for us, we're not in the job, the business of trying to interpret what statutes mean, that's the court's job.
Correct.
We're pretty much confined to, uh, well, the text of the, of the nineteen forty-six variance, and then the fifty-one variance that allows that. And I think you're right, in that, you know, part of the problem is that was not defined very well. But I'm not sure we're at that stage, where, whether we're gonna sustain or deny the appeal. Or sustain or deny the cease and desist, is that the better use of the language?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I do appreciate this, I mean, it gives me some guys, go ahead.
I, I would like to say then, uh, I'm in favor of sustaining Jack's cease and desist order as written, and that he can use this definition as a guide when he speaks with the owners of the property. Doesn't, one way or the other, I just think there need, they, somebody last week, their attorney and some of the residents were asking for a definition. So Jack now has a definition. And if, if upon his inspections, he sees there's other activities other than what a limited repairer is permitted to do, he can work that out with them.
Pat?
That's fine, and I agree with you on that. Question, do we know if there are limited, uh, repair shop or a general repair shop?
There are general repair.
General repair, you have documentation on it, we never saw anything here.
Um, yeah, I, I've looked at, there, there are actually two general repair licenses issued for that, that property, not limited, general repair. Yep.
Alright, so if it's.
I can confirm that.
So if it's general, uh, I think, uh, you're not basing on limited, you're, you're basing on what they can do as a general repair shop. Which is, uh, which we actually have a clear definition of that, that, um, our town attorney was so kind to, uh, uh, develop, uh, this, um, guidelines, um, that the dissemination between limited and general, which is, uh.
Okay. Wayne, you're pointing to the, the cease and desist order?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I'm, I'm wondering why it says, uh, limited when.
Because that's what the, that's what the variance said in forty-six.
I, I get that, but the point is, is that they, if, if that's the case, why wasn't that updated?
Well, there's a contradiction, because they have a general, they may have a general repair license, but it's limited.
I understand, I'm not sure that we're the body to work that out.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, this board has a limited task, it's to find whether or not, uh, to sustain or overrule the, um, cease and desist order by the CEO. So if this board is satisfied that the evidence presented during the public hearing related to motor vehicle repair work did not violate the court injunction, and then the two variances that the property received, then, you know, you, you'll not find in favor of the cease and desist order, but if you find that the evidence does support that there was a violation of those three authorities, then you'll find in favor of the cease and desist order and against the appeal, so. Uh, I appreciate the, the commentary, but, you know, there's no variance application pending for this property.
So, so really the problem we've got, gentlemen, is a dearth of information.
That's correct.
And, and a lack of a definition, a dearth of information and a lack of a definition. However, we're limited in scope in what we're doing here. Based on the fact we didn't hear a lot of evidence about what's going on in there, I don't know that we have enough to be able to tell whether, I don't know whether we have enough evidence on the record to sustain the cease and desist. Does that make, does, does that make sense? So it may be that because we don't have any evidence, that we have to deny the cease and desist and leave that for a different time. If, if they come back with something specific, they're not, they said they're, they testified they're not doing transmissions or anything in there. Uh, if it comes back that they're doing transmissions, then, then there'll be another cease and desist, and we're, we're back on the.
So in other words, you wouldn't modify, uh, the, number one?
We can't. I thought we established that when we were doing.
Well, that's what I'm asking, I wanna make sure that that's the ability, we can modify, um, the, the actual language.
I don't think we can. I think we're stuck with what we've got.
Okay.
And based on the fact, I don't think we have enough, I don't really, didn't really hear any evidence about what was going on in there. I think we're almost kinda stuck, and to, and once again, I'm getting trapped in the language here, to, uh, deny this, that part of the cease and desist, and leave that, violations of that for another day, if it is, go ahead, Wayne.
No, there was a favorable testimony from many of the neighbors, uh, that the repair work that was performed by, um, the owner of the repair portion of that business, um, they were very, very pleased, so I, I think we have to take that into account, that, uh, that aspect. Maybe shouldn't, we should, um, not uphold that aspect of the cease and desist order.
I think that's, that's wise. We did hear a lot of testimony from people who had used the, and even from people that are here tonight, that, that had used the facility and were comfortable with the repairs that were being done there. Is there any more discussion? So I'd entertain a motion then, um, you wanna take a stab at it? Go ahead, Wayne.
Uh, I would like to make a motion that we do not sustain item number one of the cease and desist.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, per order, I would suggest that the motion include that you're ruling in favor of the, uh, the appeal on item number one.
Okay, so we're, we're ruling in favor of the appeal, and we're not in, we're not, we're denying this. Is that right? We're, are we sustaining the appeal?
I would use the phrase overruling.
We are overruling the cease and desist.
So, I'm sorry, just to clarify, we are, I know we did it in two separate motions, but we are upholding the cease and desist order with the modification that item number one is not included. Right? Does that clean it up?
Yeah, so, Jack, the, the first motion that the board made and approved sustained your cease and desist order as to items two and three. And it expressly excluded item one, so now, you know, this, somewhat unusual, but this, this applica, this appeal is being decided via two motions.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the motion on the table now is that we are going to rule in favor of the appellant, Mr. Clemens, and overrule the cease and desist order as to item number one. And I have a, now the motion. And I have a, I have a motion by Wayne, and I have second by Pat. Jenny, can you call the rule on that?
Mr. Panza?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Crow?
Yes.
Mr. Nellino?
Yes.
Yep. So that concludes our business here, gentlemen. Is there any new, new business to come before the board? Thank you all for your time and your heart.
Did we mention the change in the agenda with the second item that we're not gonna be here on?
We did not, we talked with our council beforehand, I don't think it's really necessary.
That's fine, we don't, we're not getting to it.
Okay. Alright, with that, everybody have a safe trip home. Good night, everybody. I'll make a motion to, Jen? First from Pat, we got a motion from Pat, and a second from Jen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, good night, TV land. Thank you to our technical wizards in the back.